And we'll start with the flag salute led by Supervisor Euler.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kirk. Now is the time for public comment. This is the time when anyone from the public can address the board on something that is not on the agenda. Keep in mind we can... Oh, you know, I miss it.
Only if you want.
Anne, I am so sorry. Anne, would you read the meeting procedures?
It's your favorite thing to do, too.
So you make them stick around here. You're just, you know, you don't have a chance.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting at Monday, October 24th, 2011. Agendas are available on the table at the doors of this meeting room. If you're here to speak on, if you're carrying on the agenda, you may be so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cell phones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thanks, Anne. Now is the time for public comment. This is the time when anyone from the public can address the board on something that is not on the agenda. Keep in mind, we can take no action. If you'd like to, just come up to the podium and state your name, please.
Sandy Evans Hall. And I would just like to, on behalf of the Chamber and Convention and Visitors Bureau and Resort Association, welcome all of you to the most beautiful place on earth, North Lake Tahoe. And we did arrange to have some very nice weather today and this evening, and we're very excited to be able to host you tonight at Jake's on the lake, and we hope to see all of your smiling faces there. And Jake's, by the way, is just, if you go into Tahoe City and drive a little bit towards Dollar Hill, on your right you'll see a big sign that says "The Boat Works Mall," and turn right into that, and you'll go down there, and that's where Jake's is. So if you have any questions, just follow me. Thanks.
Thank you, Sandy. Now we are going to go... Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Hi, I'm Ed Hennefeld. I'm a 34-year resident of Squaw Valley, and I wanted to just do a little follow-up to what was actually a consent agenda item for you guys in June. At that point, you accepted a grant from the State Water Board, which in turn was a 319 grant from the federal government that went towards the projects that my group, the Friends of Squaw Creek and Placer County, have been pursuing for about seven, eight years now, Squaw Creek restoration, trying to get that creek, our little eight-mile watershed creek, is dysfunctional to the point of being impaired due to sediment, according to the 303D listing of the EPA. So with that, my group, the Friends of Squaw Creek, put in matching money, half of our account, but nevertheless, we're happy to do it, of $10,000 as a matching grant to what Placer County put in, over $16,000, what our watershed consultant put in, over $16,000, to match and to further augment the $125,000 that the State Water Board gave Placer County to implement this. The lead project manager is Edmund Solomon of your senior planning department, and he's been out there in the field with our consultant even this fall, looking to already implement this. So thank you for that grant and the support that you've given over the years, and I just wanted to hand this $10,000 check, half of our money, to Jennifer, you know, who I'm sure will get it to the right people to advance Squaw Creek restoration.
We look forward to seeing the project when it's complete.
Thank you. I think I'm going to give this to the clerk of the board, however, for safekeeping.
While you're on camera.
Yes. Not in my eyes. Thank you, Ed.
Thanks. Is there anyone else from the public could like to address the board on something not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will now go into closed session. So, Tony, do you want to...
Yeah, the board will take up the items on page one of its agenda. There'll be a brief discussion of litigation matter, and there will be discussion of labor negotiations with PPEO. And when we come out, there will be report, and then we'll take up the afternoon department items after that. So unfortunately, I think we're going to ask the room to be cleared, because I'm told this is where we will do our closed session.
Thank you. Okay, the board is reconvening after closed session to take up our department items, and Tony will report out from closed session.
The board has returned from closed session. With regards to item A, anticipated litigation, the board received a report about a potential conflict of interest for one of the county's outside lawyers, Hanson Bridget, involving Bob Blum, who does tax work for us on occasion. And the board has authorized us to accept and waive the potential conflict of interest. We will notify council of that decision. While in closed session, the board took up and received a report from its negotiating team with regards to negotiations on PPEO, the board gave direction to that negotiating team. That closes this report.
Thank you, Tony. We'll now take up our first department item, County Executive, North Lake Tahoe Resort Association Annual Report, if I can say that. Jennifer.
Morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jennifer Merchant with the County Executive... Am I echoing? Do you want me to start over? Oh, it's afternoon? That's what happened. Okay. I've been sleeping in a lot lately. Good afternoon. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jennifer Merchant with the County Executive Office. I just wanted to introduce the new... You guys, that was not nice. Okay. Okay. Yes, I do. It will be 5:00 in about a half an hour, actually. Anyway, I wanted to introduce the new CEO of the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. She will be reporting to you today regarding a status update and plans for the upcoming fiscal year for the resort association. Also with her today is Andy Chapman, the Director of Marketing, and Ron Trebus, the Director of Community Planning and Partnerships. And I think I neglected to mention Sandy's name, Sandy Evans Hall. That's it for me for now.
Thank you, Jennifer. And I have to follow that. Board of Supervisors, thank you so much for allowing us to come before you today. And I've got two of our top team members, Andy Chapman and Ron Trebus, here with me today, and they're going to help me with the presentation on the last year, because I arrived here right around the middle of May this year. And so I really can't take any credit for the great things that they were able to achieve over the past year. So I'd like them to fill you in on that, and then I'm going to tell you a little bit about what I've been doing the last five months, which is working with our Board of Directors in developing a five-year strategic list of goals, action plan for this year, realigning our staff and our organization, and really, hopefully, setting us up to be very successful over the next five years on your behalf. So we'll start off, and I'm hoping I can figure this one out. Ah, there we go. Our mission is still to promote tourism and benefit business through efforts that enhance the economic, environmental, recreational, and cultural climate of the area. As we talk about marketing accomplishments, Andy's going to come up here and tell you a little bit about the Amgen Tour of California, San Diego Winter Snow Campaign, their new website design, which has been very exciting, and the photo gallery that they've developed. So Andy, want to take it away?
Thank you, and thank you for being up here in Tahoe. We appreciate seeing you all in our beautiful neck of the woods. Couple of things, just on the marketing as a whole. Obviously, there's a variety of things that we're doing to market this region, to really drive that overnight stay, incremental overnight stay, additional overnight stay. Looking at new market immersion, you know, where do we see the new markets coming into play for the current year, what our three- and five-year strategies are going into those marketplaces, and certainly keeping our eye on our established markets, making sure that we see what the competitors are doing in our traditional core drive markets, for instance, our LA markets and things like that. So a variety of things. I know we don't have time to go through the entire marketing plan, and it is getting close to that 5:00 hour, so I won't do that. I do want to touch on the Amgen Tour of California. We all know that that was a significant undertaking by many of us in the organization and in the community as a whole. Unfortunately, what we did not see was that going around Lake Tahoe. What we saw was snowfall, and I think Chief's here someplace, a couple of his motos on the ground over on West Shore. So it was obviously the reasons why the race was canceled. Very disappointing for everyone in the entire region. The safety of the riders, safety of the spectators, we understood that. What we heard from the organizers, though, is everything that we were responsible for, everything that the riders saw up to Saturday night at about 1:30 in the morning, I guess it was, when the snow started to fly a little bit, you know, we delivered 110%. They have every intention to come back in a future year when it's going to work. We're already under discussions with them on how that's going to, how we're going to accomplish that. So with that in mind, I did want to just spend one quick second and give you guys a token of our appreciation for the Board of Supervisors' recognition and help with this effort. And if you ever see anybody from AEG, make sure you have that on, because then you can show the support that this region has. And I know you saw some racing going on in Auburn, so you guys actually saw a little bit more than we did. With that, just moving on to the San Diego Winter Snow Campaign, which was an effort that we moved forward with, with a number of our resorts and hotel partners. This will be the third year that we are moving forward with that marketplace. We really looked at what an emerging market looked like for us, and one that we can go in and want to afford to make a move out of that market, and really see some significant effort in that market, and get some folks coming up this way. It was, last year was the second of a three-year campaign, and we're getting ready to launch the third year right now. We had six partner buy-in of the resorts last year, where we put leveraged dollars in from our marketing campaign, and they all leveraged that to a 50/50, about $110,000 campaign, and really looked at a buy-two-get-one free lift ticket and a buy-two-get-one free overnight stay. What we saw in San Diego was a marketplace that was very compatible to the destination product that we offered up here, very into the outdoors. Of course, out there, it's surfing on the waves and all that, but very outdoor-oriented, a lot of flights, two direct non-stop flights coming into Reno Tahoe International Airport, direct flights into Sacramento. So a really good marketplace for us to go into. Worked with our hotel partners, and each of them that were involved in the campaign offered to buy two, get that third night free as well. So we've seen this market move for us over the last, over last December 1st through March 31st. The traffic to our website out of the San Diego County metro area was actually our fifth-largest city in California, just behind San Francisco, Sacramento, LA, and San Jose. So from the year prior, it moved from about 14th place to 5th place. So we've seen some significant traffic coming out of there and anticipate moving forward with that in the years to come. Another significant undertaking we took was the revision of our website. We found some of the navigation was getting a little old. You really got to keep on the websites to keep them fresh, keep your navigation fresh, keep your social links and everything in there. So we did a significant undertaking, separated out the winter and summer. We had them all under one blanket site, so you can search them both through the site, but really try to focus our efforts from an image standpoint into summer, if it's summertime and they're in the site, and certainly they can get to winter, the consumers. And during the wintertime, we're getting ready to flip the switch on November 1st into the winter site. Improved all the navigation, improved the click-throughs to our lodging properties, because that's what we're trying to do, is to deliver that customer into our lodging links, and really trying to let the customer look at their preferences, their vacation preferences, kind of make those decisions down that preference track, and end up in an area, whether it's Donner Summit, whether it's Kings Beach, whether it's West Shore or here at Grand Le Bac, and then make those decisions and book directly with the properties themselves. We've seen a lot of increase in the click-throughs to our lodging properties. We've seen increases through the cool deal section of our website, where we allow our properties, and we encourage our properties and allow them, we encourage our properties, to give us their deals, and they use our website as an additional arm of their marketing. So we spent some significant amount of time on that website. I encourage you, if you haven't been on there, to take a look at it. Next time you're planning your vacation to North Tahoe, it should be a great resource for you. And then finally, just a little bit on our year-long photo shoot. We spent a year with a contracted photographer to really capture the essence of vacation to the North Lake Tahoe region up here. It's really the hero shots, then the shots from a photography standpoint that drive our message and drive the, kind of the marketing vision for this region. And it's really getting out and playing in what we have to offer here, from summer to winter, from the dining and culinary experiences to the resort properties to the mom-and-pop properties up on the lake. So we spent some time to make sure we were capturing the right kind of imagery, so that moving forward over the next three to five years, we have a full library of use now for not only our marketing campaigns, but for public relations use, website for all of those things that we need. So that's just a little smattering of a few of the things that we did work on this year. I know we keep the board in tune on our quarterly reports and six-month reports throughout the year, but I certainly could answer any questions anybody may have.
I don't have any questions, but as somebody who has recently taken up triathlons, I thank you for this, because I will actually be able to wear it.
Excellent. I appreciate that. Again, when you see the AEG guys wave at them and point at the Lake Tahoe part of that, see, next year.
Andy, I just, I want to take the opportunity to thank you again for everything you did in advance and on the days of the Amgen race. And I can attest to the fact that it was the middle of the night, because Andy phoned me about 1:30 in the morning to say, "It doesn't look good." But we're going to continue to work together, make sure we get Amgen back here, come hell or high water.
And they will.
But maybe not snow.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy.
Andy gave you all of my jerseys, so I won't be able to wear those anymore, but it'll be fun to see you all out on the streets, Jim. What I was connected with last year, amongst a couple of other things since the last time we met and gave a report to you, was continuing with completing some and starting some additional infrastructure projects and transportation projects. And in the transportation funding, we were able to spend about 900... We have to do this. Okay, great. You told me the left button. I don't have to tell you. There it is. $952,000 last year. And continuing to be able to help assist with the TART baseline program, which is, of course, the necessary element before we can do any of the enhancements that we do to that. And so to keep that baseline program going up here is the key to everything else. And in addition to that, in our North Lake Tahoe Express, which we started about four, five years ago now, from the airport up to here, we were able to not only increase ridership, but increase the revenue that has come with that. And consequently, this year, we'll probably be able to increase that schedule a little bit more on some of the routes that run to our main ski areas up here, so that we have a greater level of transportation, again, coming from the airport. The other addition that was very important, I think, was to add to our nighttime shuttles. This is a free service we provide in the winter and in the summer that allows people to get out and about town and not be driving around, both in the winter and the shuttle. And that system now pretty well connects all of our Placer County destinations to one another at night and runs till about midnight, which was a great enhancement, I think. And then we were able to do the feasibility study showing the possible ramifications, positive and negative, for a water shuttle system that would run on the north and west shores. We've been waiting impatiently for the Tahoe Transportation District and others to get a cross-lake or from South Shore to North Shore water shuttle going. And we did the study to see what possibilities the, to have an ongoing peer-to-peer type of a shuttle on the north and west shores would be without that. And we found and believe that by putting that into effect, we will add an enhancement to the existing car traffic situation, and also have in place then the next step for when the boat, whenever it does come from the South Shore, does hit the North Shore as to how to disperse people. And we're looking forward to having some level, if not that whole program, in effect for this next summer, which will be very nice when Caltrans starts to rebuild the whole West Shore, Highway 89. I think people will be looking for another opportunity. And we did also apply for the Bicycle Friendly Community, which is an international program of awards that then publicizes, as well as commends various areas that have a certain level of bicycle advocacy going on. And we did receive in our first application the Honorable Mention Award, and we'll be going back in this year again, trying to move up into the colored medals section of the awards for that. In the, our capital investment programs, which is the actual infrastructure, we, again, we spent just under $1 million, actually spent that. We authorized through your approval, a lot more than that, but we did, as you know, with most of our capital investment funds, we do partner with other agencies in order to either get additional fundings or to have the contracts put in place that our office, my department doesn't quite have the staffing to do all of that, but we're working on that, too, by having me work more hours. But we did complete, with Peter's help, bus shelters, and we had had a program of getting six in the ground, and we now have those six in, and we're going to continue with that program, too, which is an instant good program for people to realize that their TOT dollars are being spent by the county in ways that are very beneficial to not just our visitors, but our workers that are serving the visitors up here. We completed a play area in the North Tahoe Regional Park, and this was a play area that would further enhance the groups that come there for tournaments of soccer, softball, and then have the whole families come. And that, as I said, was totally completed. The Truckee River Corridor Environmental Assessment process is back underway with a $250,000 grant to Placer County Planning, so that we can move closer to getting that bike trail, which is our overall goal, to get the complete area in a bike trail loop, connected from Squaw Valley, where we now end coming from Tahoe City, and hitting the Nevada County line. And so we'll have the bike trail all along the, as well as other amenities, all along that corridor. Couple other things that we did was contributed to Placer County, again, through the Department of Public Works, picking up on the, what had been suspended North Tahoe Bike Trail, which is the segment that will eventually run from Dollar Point, where we now stop, and connect over at the regional park near Kings Beach by taking the first bite out of that, which will keep that going. And we've moved closer to the completion of the Lake Tahoe Multitrail along the lakeside throughout Tahoe City, as well as installing about 24 of our wayfinding signs on the Tahoe City Public Utility District Bike Trail. And probably one of our most important things, looking to the future, that we were able to complete, was our visitor survey as to how people would react to a renewal of the transient occupancy tax. And the overall visitor survey, which came back in showing between an 85 and 95, or 90% positive response from people to, that they would be quite likely to vote for that when we have that election next June. So that'll be something now we're pounding home for the rest of this year, and then have the election in June. Other than that, just continue on with some projects that we're funding, the Transit Center, the Martis Valley North Star Bike Trail, and the Regional Wayfinding Signage Program. It's been a good year, and we're looking forward to a better one still. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
And here's the list of all of the things that we've done in the capital investment funds. As we move forward this year, kind of the first step that I took with our board was to get them all together in the month of June, and we identified our key function areas. And then from there, really set up a five-year set of goals under each one of those key function areas. Our board came back with infrastructure and transportation, of course, with our 2% TOT that is being spent on that as being one of the primary areas that we are functioning in. Marketing and sales, visitor information was one that was kind of hidden under marketing, and we really elevated that to be a core function of our organization, primarily because we're so spread out within this basin, that really being able to deliver on the product that we're promising to our visitors, we felt we really needed to elevate the importance of how we deliver that information within the basin itself. Membership services is what, you know, we currently kind of refer to as our Chamber of Commerce, but our chamber really is the overall organization. It's our chamber, our CVB, our resort association. And part of that is performing membership services and economic development within our business communities. And so that's something that is also a core function of what we do. And then community relations, how do we bring the whole community in, as well as the business associations, into the actions that we want to take on. So we developed the three-to-four, five-year strategic goals. I then handed those goals over to all of our staff, and underneath that, we put in the action steps for this year that you see in the packet in front of you. So we went into a lot of detail in terms of how are we going to start to move these goals forward this year. And each year, we'll be coming back to you with a new set of action steps of how we're going to move those forward. And then now, we're realigning the systems and skills, the staffing, the various software programs, all the things that we're doing so that we're going to be able to be effective in achieving these goals. One of the things that we did initially was identify three key initiative areas, and these are not to replace what we currently are known for, but it's really to take advantage of what we think are trends that are elevating these particular activities in the minds of our consumers. So paddle sports, bicycling, and Nordic skiing are really three areas that we see as huge opportunities to gain a position within the state of California as being that primary place that you can conduct those activities. So we're working across all of our core function areas, infrastructure, signage, marketing, promotions, all of those things. We'll be looking at these three key initiative areas and seeing how we can position ourselves in those three areas. We're also looking in infrastructure and transportation, as Ron said. These were the, kind of the, top five goals that our board came up with. Number one, and this truly was in order of importance to the board, was to really look at the lodging and commercial environment. This is the built environment, and how can we possibly increase by 100 quality lodging units within our north and west shore? So that's something that we're really going to be looking at, and we're going to need your help to get that done. Increasing ridership on our service, and in particular, trying to get from lodge to recreation. So taking that recreational route and trying to increase that by 20%. Looking at our lift into our airports, both Sacramento and Reno Tahoe, we want to try and increase by 200,000 seats, especially from the northeast and southeast markets. We think Atlanta, we think New York really provides some opportunity for us, if we can get those people to travel cross-country. We'd like to install 50 wayfinding signs within the Tahoe Basin over the next five years. We actually have a goal of getting six in place by the end of this next year. So we're going to move fairly quickly on that. Ron has been working on it for quite a long time, and we're actually getting close to having a manual, directional manual, ready to go. We'll be coming... We'll be coming through before your board and planning commission to get our first six pilot program underway. And then from there, we hope to be able to take that and roll it into 50 signs in the next five years. And then all the trail systems in the basin, which include signage for each of those trail systems, is something that we'd like to take a look at. And the Homewood Trail, Martis Camp Nordic, or the Martis Camp North Star Trail, a lot of those that, where we can try and connect that entire triangle and make it so that we have a, a really great trail system. We already have a good trail system, we want it to be great. This lakeside trail is nearing completion, and it is moving fast. I can't believe, I was just down there yesterday. And when you're down at Jake's today, you can kind of get a view of what that's going to do. We completed it by the Lighthouse Center, which is where the Safeway is. It's now coming along the front of the lake, and we should be able to connect that next year. But the messaging that we're really taking out right now is in trying to renew the TOT taxes, that we have generated more than $19 million in infrastructure for this area. We've been able, able to leverage that 2% that we're getting into over $19 million in infrastructure projects. So that, that is incredible. And the total amount is 150 million of projects that we've been able to do all the way throughout the basin. So I think for those people looking to vote on this again, I think they're seeing that, one, they don't have to pay it, and two, we're able to really effectively leverage those dollars. Infrastructure and transportation projects that we have ongoing right now, the West Commons Beach, the old firehouse building in downtown Tahoe City, we've been looking at alternatives. The Kings Beach Streetscape is really exciting, and I'm very pleased that that's moving forward. The Homewood Bike Trail is looking like it's going to get, get that final stretch started next year. Regional wayfinding signage, as we mentioned, possible purchase of the Tahoe City Golf Course, which you're going to be asked to give some money to later on in your meeting today. North Lake Tahoe Express, we're hoping to get that to the point where it's actually making money for us, which would be awesome with our new visitor center at the Reno Tahoe Airport. We're going to be able to hopefully expand the awareness of that service and expand the ridership on that this winter. We've got the enhanced summer transit service that we've been working on with the Night Riders Service and also 267. On the regional coordinated skier shuttle, we were not able to get that in place this year due to the merger of two of our large ski areas, but we're really working at trying to put all of the pieces together so that we have that going next year. And then the North and West Shore Water Shuttle is something also that we hope to start a pilot program by this next summer. So really exciting things that we're working on here. Marketing and sales, Andy's got his work cut out for him, I can tell you that. Increasing occupants during, during our strike zones, which we've actually identified specific strike zone timeframes within the year where either inland from the lake or at the shore, we are slower than we could be. And we've identified those as the, those target areas that we'd like to increase our occupancy by 20% during that timeframe, and by 10% overall. And again, this is over five years, but that's our goal. Dominate the California market as a destination for those key initiative areas. Develop a clear marketing brand. We're going to be going through a little bit of a branding exercise this year and looking at our campaigns. We want to make sure that they're fresh and that they're really relevant to our consumers. And increasing TOT by 15%, of which you get a significant portion of, so we hope to do that. And growing our conference revenue and attendance by 25%. So this is, these are some pretty ambitious goals that we're setting out here. And you've seen some of our marketing examples. Again, like I said, we're, we're going to be looking at our overall campaigns, both winter and summer over this year, and we'll be putting out an RFP for our agency. So we'll be looking at, you know, do we change agencies at this point in time? Do we stay with who we've got? That'll be an exercise we're going to conduct. Membership services, economic development, business advocacy, this is an area that we think we can really make some huge strides in. We're going to increase our dues and non dues revenue by 50%. That's, that's a lot over the next five years, but I think it can be done. We want to be the recognized business leader in the regulatory environment, as well as in legislative issues that impact our businesses at the lake and, and East Placer County. We want to take the lead on all economic development programs that involve tourism and stick within our mission, and that includes Placer County Roadmap as well as the Prosperity Plan. So we're looking at all of those and saying, where does this align with what we're currently doing, and how can we impact these economic development initiatives? We want to provide advocacy for all project and programs aligned with our mission. So be looking at various things throughout the next five years in this category. These are just some of the new program ideas that we're starting to unfold and create a timeline around. Chamber gift certificates is a great way to keep the shopping dollar locally, so we're going to be looking at that. Database integration into our consumer website, sustainable business program, again, enhancing the existing sustainability and ethos within our businesses. Wage and salary survey, membership polling, hopefully being able to give you a good handle from time to time on how do our businesses feel about certain issues and things that are coming forth. A small business development center, we're working out a play, a way that they can come in and use our offices right here at the Y in Tahoe City as a place to do business consultations. We're going to be looking at a lodging barometer that'll give our retail and restaurant businesses an opportunity to understand what's coming up in the, in the next week or 10 days from an occupancy standpoint. Like to engage the young people in our communities in a young professionals network. There's a lot of these springing up all over the nation, and they've been very successful way to kind of pass the torch. And Business Outlook Breakfast, hospitality training, these are just, like I said, a few examples of some things we'd like to get started. Visitor information, as I said, we've elevated. We want to increase our net promoter scores, and I'll explain what this is, by 20% over this next year, where we'll be taking a baseline stab at that through some intercept research that we're going to do during the summertime. And, and net promoter score is really that willingness of the visitor, when they're here or just before they leave here, to say, I would, on a scale of one to 10, I would rate either eight, nine, or 10, that I would go back and I would really recommend my vacation experience to my friends and family. Highly recommend it. If they score below an eight, they're detractor. They're probably going to say, yeah, it was great, but, you know, there's something there that wasn't quite right. So the more that they are a net promoter, that's what we want. We want their experience to be so good that they're going to go back and say, ah, it was incredible, you've got to try this. So that's what we're going to be gearing up to, is we want to increase that from our baseline by 20%, or we want to reach at least an 85% of our visitors being net promoters. That's a huge goal. We want to assess our regional needs for visitor information, distribution. As you know, we've got our, our center here in Tahoe City, we've got a summer center at Kings Beach, we now have our Reno Tahoe Airport Center, we're going to be having some involvement in the Auburn Center, we're looking at involvement in California Welcome Center in Truckee, we're looking at some other locations, we're looking at mobile technology, we're looking at guides and various things that we put in rooms, we're looking at using QR codes and every kind of technology we can so that the consumer with their smartphone can easily access a calendar of events, or shopping, or dining, or all the things they may want to do. So that's, that's taking a look at everything we do within this, within this market. How do we actually get that word out to the visitor so that they can have the most fun they can possibly have while they're here? And new visitor centers, as I mentioned, we've got these two that are underway, but we're also going to be looking at other areas where we can impact the visitor. And like I said, we need to deliver the promise, and that's part of, you know, is getting this guy right here to agree to meet, you know, our girls that are coming up and, and treat them to a really nice dinner while they're here so that they can actually enjoy this very same experience. Jim, I'm just kidding, really, just kidding. Yeah, we're not going to find that guy.
My wife might disagree.
Kirk, Kirk, you might be able to do that for us.
My wife might disagree.
Okay. So it really takes the village, and we understand that, that if the community understands what we're trying to do, then hopefully they can help us be successful as an organization, as, as businesses in the community, as all the people that we represent here. So we want to build trust, confidence, we want to be an open book to all of you, and I encourage each one of you individually to, to come by, to meet with me, give me a call, I can come meet with you. We can go over anything that you'd like to know about our organization and what we're doing and how we're going to try to do that. We want to be a recognized voice of the community in all of our core function areas. We're really going to try to avoid that mission creep and that scope creep and really try to focus in on the things that you see before you. These are the things we want to accomplish, and it's a very ambitious set of goals. We want to have a, a clear brand message of who we are and what we do so that there's not the confusion out there of what our organization is about. And we want to have a, a comprehensive communication plan. We've already started that with our, I don't know if you see our Biz Bytes, but we do send those out on a weekly level, and we try to, you know, inform all of our members and all of our people on that list, what it is we're working on, what we're working on in marketing, what we're working on in infrastructure, what we need their help with, what we're doing within our membership. So that's, that's a piece of the communication plan that we'll be starting to engage. And then, of course, the most important thing is gaining the voter approval of that TOT renewal in 2012, and that will be a, a June election. So this is part of the reason why I'm very excited, besides just being a, a very optimistic person to begin with, is I got a chance to move here at a time when I think we are at a crossroads of a huge synergistic movement, an economic wave, so to speak, flowing through the, I don't want to say tsunami because that has so many negative connotations, but I do want to say a huge economic wave coming through our area. And, you know, with Vail Resorts buying North Star, investing $30 million in our area, we've got Squaw investing $50 million, and then now the merger that could create the largest ski area in North America right here in our basin. We've got the Boulder Bay Project has been approved, hopefully going to move forward. We've got a lot of really cool things, and it doesn't end there. We've got the Homewood Mountain Resort Master Plan under review, and that's been really exciting to go to those meetings and see the amount of support there is for that project. Bike trails nearing completion, these are all the ones that are in the works right now. The Kings Beach Redevelopment Project is really going to spruce up that whole area there. Yee-haw, you know, Tahoe City Golf Course, potentially an Olympic bid for 2022. I just have to say, wow, it's really exciting to be here right now at this time in this area. And it is, it is the talk of the nation when you look at skiing, when you look at Alpine skiing, when you look at sports, they're looking right now at North Lake Tahoe. We are on the map. So we need to make all resources available, we need to make sure we have those lines of communication open, like my little Jack be nimble there. Align all entities behind a single focus, we have to be nimble, we have to be quick. There are going to be times when we're going to be coming to you and saying, you know, we need your help, we need your expertise, we need whatever resources you can bring to the table to make sure that we can get these things done in a timely manner. Because our success is your success, and we firmly believe that. And we want to work together hand in hand to make sure that all these things on this list are going to be achieved. And now I have time for questions, I think.
Questions, comments? Jim?
I can sense your excitement. It translates very well, and I think the board, your board has made a great decision to hire you.
Thank you.
And it even energizes Andy and Ron, isn't that correct? Yeah. I just wondered if you could give us a little bit of your background, so we know where you came from, if you don't mind.
No, not at all. It's not a secret. I have no prison sentences to withhold. I, I actually was recruited out of the Steamboat Springs area in Colorado. And I was born in Pasadena, California, and then I lived in Ontario for about five, six years, then moved down to Del Mar Salona Beach. So I was a San Diego gal on the beach, and then I moved up to Saratoga, went to high school in Saratoga, and that was during the late 60s, and that's when I was introduced to the Tahoe area. Had a friend that had a house right on the west shore, right near Skyland, and came up here and actually attended cheerleading camp, I know that's hard to believe. But I went to cheerleading camp at Squaw Valley, lived at the, you know, lived in Olympic Village, and, and just loved Lake Tahoe at that time. That was one of my favorite, favorite places. Then I, I ended up going to college up in Washington, University of Washington, and stayed up there for 10 years, then went out to Steamboat Springs on a tour where we actually looked at a lot of different ski areas all throughout the west. And we chose Steamboat as a place to move. And so I got there in 1981. It was their first year of no snow. I arrived in January 10th, and they were picnicking out on the base of the ski area in shorts at that time. And this was the year before they installed any snowmaking equipment. So I got involved in the community, they asked me, I was working for the Sheraton Hotel, I got involved in putting on a summer-long campaign to bring people in called The Way It Was Days, and I was organizing 16 different special events each summer for a couple of years there, from Indian Powwows to square dance festivals and mountain men rendezvous. And so I did that for a couple of years and ran a retail organization, and then was asked to join the chamber and was their very first membership coordinator. I took that organization from a membership of about 200 members up to about 900 members, and was able to then evolve over 25 years into their CEO. I was doing that for 10 years when they came and knocked on my door and said, would you be interested in moving to Lake Tahoe? And at the time, I said, you know, I think I'll probably be dying in Steamboats, so no, thank you very much. And they kept knocking, and they said, really? You know, you might want to take a look at this. And the more I took a look at it and talked to my husband about it, and we said, you know, maybe it's a good time to move, and, and it might be a good time to take a look at this opportunity. So I came out for the interview last March, we got to ski Alpine Meadows, got to see Squaw Valley in a foot of snow for Don Patrol, and that kind of talked my husband into maybe making the move. And when they offered me the position when I was out here in March, we said, yeah, we'd like to do that. So that's where I come from, born in California, and I'm now back home.
All right, good, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I just, I just have some comments, which is, it's been great working with you so far, really enjoyable, just bringing a different perspective and a different vision to the organization, but one that fits very well with the existing organization. So I really see a synchronicity between what was what you bring and really what can be in terms of, of the future of this whole area from Donner Summit here to the lake. Looking forward to working with you over the next couple of years. I think you have given yourself quite, quite a number of tasks, and, you know, any, any help that I can be, any help that this board can be, I'm going to offer it on our behalf in helping you get to your goals. Let us know. We're a five-person board, I'm one vote, so just make sure you reach out to all the rest of these guys as well. So thank you.
I don't think she'll have any.
Thank you, Jennifer. I will, I will definitely take you up on that. And I do have to say, I'm very blessed to move into an organization that has such a dedicated staff. I mean, really, they, the staff has been great and welcoming, and the board is so passionate too about what they do. I mean, you really have a great board of directors overseeing the fiscal responsibility that you've given them.
Thank you, Sandy. Okay, our next item, Tahoe City PUD, consider an allocation of up to $20,000 contribution with other agencies towards a possible purchase of Tahoe City Golf Course. Jennifer?
I think I might have better luck over here. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Waiting for my slide, there we go. The item before your consideration today is a request from the Tahoe City Public Utility District to allocate up to $20,000 to conduct due diligence toward the possible purchase of the Tahoe City Golf Course. And the slide you see in front of you there is an aerial view of the golf course, it's pretty evident, it's the big green spot in the center there. The Tahoe City PUD reached agreement this last month to purchase the golf course for $5 million and is currently in a 180-day escrow period. The golf course is the largest land holding in Tahoe City, and is comprised of five parcels, and I've got a parcel map, it's not quite as pretty as that, but you can at least make out where the, the different parcel locations are, totaling approximately 45 acres in size. The purchase offer was made by the PUD with the intention to create a funding partnership or other ownership structure with local agencies, possibly including Placer County, the Redevelopment Agency, the California Tahoe Conservancy, and the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. Resort Association. Any ownership structure or future use of the property will be determined following initial due diligence, which is currently underway, as well as longer-term planning process outcomes. I'm going to put the prettier picture back up if I can. There we go. Items to be analyzed during the due diligence phase include initial site mapping, Phase One environmental site assessment, an ALTA survey, property inspections and appraisal, wetlands analysis, water rights analysis, business operations, and equipment evaluation and other studies. To date, the Tahoe City PUD Conservancy and the Resort Association have already agreed to fund up to $60,000 for certain due diligence components, but another $20,000 is needed to complete all aspects. These funds would be allocated from the contributions from other agencies' budget, and should your board concur with today's recommendation, that's how it would be funded. So I'm prepared to answer any questions.
Questions, comments?
I, I just wanted to clarify a little bit for folks potentially who aren't that familiar with this area. This is within our Redevelopment Agency boundary, but interestingly, it is not currently within the community plan area for Tahoe City. One of the things that we of the county have reached out to the TRPA on during this regional plan update is inclusion of this area in the community plan. It, it makes sense. The community plan essentially surrounds it, but this piece is not part of it. I know that the Resort Association is also supportive of including that in the, in the regional plan update as a, as part of the community plan, as are a number of other entities, I believe, including the Downtown Business Association in Tahoe City. Is that correct?
Yes. There have been several letters written, including one by Placer County after direction from your board back in July, to have this number of parcels included in the community plan, because you're correct, when the community plan was completed in the early 90s, this little kind of, we call it a donut hole, even though it's square, was excluded from the kind of urban boundary. So you've got this whole commercial area through there and bounding it on the east and west and south sides, but not the golf course property itself. So there are certain limitations to improvements because of its exclusion from the community plan. But we have requested that in TRPA's regional plan update, that they include this series of parcels in its analysis and at least one of its alternatives. And then when the county goes to, to get started on the community plan update, we would go forward with analyzing this, this series of parcels as part of the Tahoe City Community Plan.
Okay. And can you go back to the ugly picture, please?
Yeah. I like the green one.
Yeah. So I just want to, I just want to point out, in terms of bringing it into the urban boundary, that's something that sort of makes some people's hackles rise when they hear, hear the word urban. The vast majority of the acreage on the Tahoe City Golf Course is SEZ or essentially undevelopable in any scenario because of TRPA's restrictions. The, the pieces that are potentially developable, which is where the RDA might have some, some role in this, and that's, of course, to be determined, are at the, the two kind of fingers there on the upper left.
And there is a section, too, in the center, right above where it says Tahoe City Golf Course, and you see that one parcel that kind of juts into the golf course. It's in that vicinity, and it comes down in kind of a U shape a little bit farther. In fact, they're working on the land coverage verifications right now, which are incomplete, but the preliminary data suggests that there's a little spur right there in the center, as well as that section on the left that you pointed out.
Right. And then the, the reason that the RDA may have some role to play with this in the future, and the reason that I'm supporting this request for these dollars, is because, as Sandy pointed out, we're trying to bring some higher-end lodging into the north and the west shores. This is potentially an opportunity for, for that to happen, a very small scale because of the constraints on the land. You know, one of the proposals is a very small-scale boutique hotel that would bring exactly that kind of lodging that we're looking for into the community. Obviously, the due diligence needs to happen. The community needs to weigh in on it if, if the PUD does end up acquiring it. There's a lot between here and there, but I do see a role for Placer County and a role for our Redevelopment Agency potentially as well in this. Thank you, Jennifer.
Other questions? Comments? Jack?
Yeah, just a quick question. I just want to make sure, you know, I don't have a problem of doing the due diligence. I mean, that's something that you need to do in order to find out what is going on with a particular purchase. But there are, as of this date, no, we haven't entered into any agreements or, you know, anything that locks us into anything. Is that correct?
Nothing at all. The, the only action we're requesting today is allocation of the $20,000 toward the analysis. There has been no previous action taken by your board or our staff to get involved in any kind of other arrangement. We have attended a couple of public meetings that the Tahoe City PUD has hosted and listened to public comment and that sort of thing, but we've taken no, no other action.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address this item? I've seen none. I'll bring them back to the board.
Okay. I would move that we approve allocation of up to $20,000 from the contributions to other agencies' budget toward the due diligence on the possible purchase of the Tahoe City Golf Course.
I'll second that. Staff recommendation, as just discussed, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we will hear an update on development projects in eastern Placer County. Michael and...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michael Johnson with the Community Development Resource Agency. Staff thought it would be appropriate, as the board is up here for its Tahoe hearings, to see some of the projects that have come before your board over the last couple of years, and to be updated on the status of those projects. The domus development in Kings Beach is currently underway. These are the 77 affordable housing units that are currently being constructed. The Brook Avenue Site has been completed. The Deer Street Site remains under construction right now. Some of the buildings are going up on the far side of the Deer Street Site. Here's Fox Street. Those units have been completed. And here's Chipmunk. This is the largest of the five sites, and it's currently under construction. And you can see some of the podium foundations going up there now. And this is Trout Street. So we're making great progress on all of these sites, and the projects have been very well received by the community. Moving out to the Martis Valley, a lot of activity continues to occur out in the Martis Valley, Martis Camp being one of those projects. This is the Barn. It's the community center for Martis Camp that was completed last year. And this past year, they completed their clubhouse, 58,000 square feet overlooking the 18th Green at the golf course there. Right now, we have 84 houses under construction in Martis Camp. It's great news for our building services team. This is one of the houses that has been completed out there. And you heard Sandy and Ron talk about transportation issues. One of the ways to address transportation and reduce the number of trips in the Martis Valley was the construction of this Martis Camp chair, which takes residents from Martis Camp directly into North Star so they do not have to drive around to the resort to gain access. It has been hugely successful.
And open the best ski terrain on the hill.
Yes, it did. North Star Village continues to work to be a year-round facility. The, in the center here is the roller skating rink. It doubles as a ice skating rink in the winter months. And you can see the sign there, Plaza Bikes. Mountain biking has become a huge activity at the resort during the spring and summer months. And it's just another way that North Star is going to expand its opportunities for visitors. This past year, North Star completed a new chairlift called the Promised Land Express. For those of you familiar with North Star, I'll go with this map over here. This is the Drifter Run, and they have two new runs here. This is called the Islands, and this is called Castle Peak. As you're coming down, you look right at Castle Peak off in the distance. And you're going to see in just a minute, this is Zephyr Lodge. It's a new 15,000-square-foot lodge that's under construction at the top of the hill. This is the view you're going to have from Zephyr Lodge looking out towards Squaw Valley. We were up there last week. They have some of the siding in place already, and it will be open and operational for this winter ski season. This is the view from the patio that you'll have. And that's what the, the finished design will look like. As, as Sandy highlighted, Vail Resorts has come in and purchased North Star last year, and they continue to invest quite a lot of capital into the facilities there. Jumping back out to Martis Camp, we have Schaefer's Mill, another housing development. They, this past year, put in a new pond that they are going to utilize for fly fishing. Mr. Wygant, I know that will be important to you, so please make note of that. You can make reservations out there. One of the houses that's been completed out at Martis Camp, or pardon me, at Schaefer's Mill, and their golf course and water features you enter the facility. Squaw Valley was recently acquired by KSL, and as with Vail's acquisition of North Star, we're starting to see a lot of investment of capital into the facilities. Here's the Snow Sports Building, or here's what used to be the Snow Sports Building, and it's currently being remodeled as visitors arrive at the Squaw Valley Resort. It's, their hope is to redo the ticket area to allow for better facilitation of skiers from the parking lot into the village and then onto the hill. This is the KT Bar and Deck that they are remodeling right now. This is what the finished product will look like. Here's the Gold Coast remodel that is going on. And that concludes the presentation. Just a brief overview of some of the projects that are going on right now. Lots of activity up here in the eastern Placer County area. And from a planning perspective, from a land development perspective, we're continuing to see a lot of building permits issued, which is very good for all of us here. Any questions or comments?
Questions, comments?
Just great to see some genuine construction going on. It feels endangered these days, of course.
Yes. And I was going to say, actually, if you feel lonely and lacking in construction on the west end of the county, come on up to the east end of the county. We have a lot going on, both on these larger-scale projects and just on single-family residences, whether remodels or new construction. You walk into the west shore CDRA building, and there's often six or eight people waiting to be served at the counter. So still a lot happening in Placer County. It's just mainly up here.
Oh.
I know.
Thank you. So next, we're going to hear an update on the Tahoe Basin Community Plan. And Lauren, are you going to present that?
Thank you. Chairman Wygant, members of the board.
Pleasure to be here this afternoon to give you a brief update on the status of the community plan update for the Tahoe Basin. As the board knows, as recently as July, there was an update on the status of this work program, which was really a kickoff. The concept of an update actually dates back to about November of 2010, when, when it came together as an idea at a staff level and certainly in consultation with the county executive office. Eventually, coming to the board in July, we received an affirmation of sort of the budget and the overall work program. In essence, what we're after is combining a lot of planning documents that exist today in the Tahoe Basin and simply getting it down to one single overarching policy document, and then a series of documents, which will have more geographic explicitness for the number of communities in the Tahoe area, including a west shore plan area zoning and design guidelines, a greater Tahoe City area, and then two on the north shore, one to the west and one to the east. So those are, that's the final product. Those are the deliverables that will come from this work program. In terms of where we're at today, it's really two primary tasks to get the work program up and running. One is consultation with the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. Obviously, with the regional plan update and us running a community plan at the same time, coordination is essential, particularly given all of the issues that TRPA is dealing with, some of which Steve Buellna will respond to when I complete my comments. The second component is a public outreach strategy, and this is a significant part of this work program, and it really has four primary elements. One is the formation of a technical advisory committee, which has been completed. The TAC has been formed. They have started their meetings. The primary focus of the TAC is to focus on existing policy. What have we done over the years that works? What has been done over the years that still is timely today, and quite frankly, what needs to be updated or changed or even eliminated. So a lot of the work of the TAC will focus on policy. There's also the development of plan area teams, drawing from really sort of stakeholder representation of the community. The stakeholders have not yet come together. That's a process that we're in the middle of right now. Solicitation has been put out for people to apply for that. There's a cutoff of November 30th, and certainly this is a plug this afternoon for folks to make those applications. Information can be found within the Planning Department, Planning Services Division with Crystal Jacobson, or online at the, at the website of that department. Once that process is complete, then there'll be a series of deliberations about selecting those plan area teams, and then their work can start as well. A third element of the outreach program is tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. There's a town hall meeting, which will happen at Kings Beach at the North Tahoe Event Center. And it's really the first opportunity to explain to the broader public what this community plan process is about, what the work of the various committees and teams are, and to start to solicit public input, particularly following up on work that had been done in the past through the Pathway 2007 process. And then the last portion of public outreach is the development of a website, which has begun. It is up and running, and certainly will continue to grow over time as public interest on this work program continues to grow as well. So what you'll find in next steps is first and foremost, the October 25th at 6:00 PM town hall meeting. Then you will see the cutoff for the plan area teams and the various stakeholders making their applications. We anticipate deliberation on that to occur in the month of December, and hopefully come January, it'll be time for another public workshop, but this time not only with the TAC forum, but also the various plan area team folks. Also, in the meantime, we will continue to coordinate with TRPA. Obviously, our community plan, running at a pace that is really directed by Placer County, it's important to coordinate that with the regional plan update at the pace that TRPA is running. And that sort of coordination will be extremely important, particularly given the potential for changes, as most recently, we have found out that it is likely that TRPA will be stepping away from the transects as a portion of their planning that was to replace the plan area statements. Steve Buellna will touch on that as well with, with the item that he's going to bring forward to you. But that's a significant example of why we must coordinate with TRPA, so that when the process is complete, not only do we have community plans that reflect our interest here in Placer County, but also represent the overall interest within the Tahoe Basin. Any questions of the board?
Questions, comments?
Lauren, can you amplify a little bit the, the process for the community teams?
For the plan area, various plan area teams. So it's, it's an application an individual can make, either online or through, again, contacting Crystal Jacobson.
And can you, what are those criteria? Do you remember?
I don't offhand. I don't have the specifics with me this afternoon. But the goal is to have a broad spectrum of the communities of Tahoe represented, both geographically, at the business, at the residential level. And then with that broad stakeholder representation, you have sort of the technical folks who can bring certainly their expertise in the, in the policy world together, but also you get the input from the community itself.
And the process, if I understand it, is we accept the applications. We vet them to make sure they fall within the guidelines, which I believe are, you need to live or own a business within the community statement. You can be a registered voter. You can be a second homeowner, so property owner, business owner, registered voter. There's some others in there. But then the county itself will not be making the choices as to those individuals. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. So that will go back to the community. So, for example, the business association in the relevant area will say, we'd like this person who applied to be our business representative.
The goal is to have the names come forward from the community, and that the vetting process, to a large extent, occurs within the community. We then bring that group together. I, I would have to go back and check in the process if there's some final deliberation by the board. I believe it occurs at a staff level, but with the concurrence in December, that we would have that group, those four groups together, and that they would first meet in the month of January.
Okay, good. I just really wanted to make it clear that anyone can apply for this. The county's role really is just to make sure that they fall within the guidelines, which are available on the website. But then it really is up to the community, the various interests in the community's business. interests in the community's business, environmental, community, neighborhoods, to really say, this is the person we'd like to see brought forward.
And all correct. And again, we haven't had that many applications. So we do want to encourage folks with any form of communication they have to get into their networks, get the word out that these applications are available. Certainly organizations where there may be a certain interest in housing and housing-related issues, if there's a candidate to be brought forward, be sure to bring that candidate forward, have them go through the application process, and then let that vetting finish in December so we can get to the real work in January.
Great. Thank you.
Anyone from the public who questions, comments? Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
Next item is TRPA's reorganized and reformatted Code of Ordinances Revised Stakeholder Review Draft. Afternoon.
I'm Steve Boulna, Community Development and Resource Agency. As your board is aware and as discussion has been made earlier today, staff has been closely following the regional plan update effort that's currently underway by the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. As part of this effort, TRPA is also updating their Code of Ordinances to not only reflect the changes that are occurring within the regional plan update, as well as to address some of the deficiencies that are contained within their existing code. In order to undertake this effort, TRPA has decided to split the review or their update of their ordinance into two phases. The first phase is primarily a reformatting effort to address some of the, to make the exist, or the document more efficient and predictable by reducing some of the redundancies, formatting the code with indexes and headings, combining some of the definitions into one location, and eliminating some of the obsolete information. The thought was by phasing this that they could address some of the issues that would have less comments from the local jurisdictions and the public ahead of schedule and essentially take care of the quick fixes. The second phase of this contains more substantive changes, similar to other aspects of the regional plan update. County staff took a team approach to reviewing the revised stakeholder review draft. Input was provided by Public Works Planning, Engineering, and Redevelopment Agency with respect to how the proposed changes would affect each of their independent disciplines. Perhaps the most common comment from the various departments was that it would be nice to eliminate or reduce the redundancies in review that occur between TRPA and the local jurisdictions and/or various agencies. As part of this common theme, Placer County and TRPA staff have had discussions in developing a comprehensive list of some of these potential areas where delegation of authority could be consolidated or more appropriately placed on the local jurisdictions as opposed to a regional planning entity. Some of these examples might include public improvement projects ranging anywhere from environmental improvement projects to public roadway projects, simple review of things such as driveway permits, non-scenic project review, grading permits, and perhaps even historical review. Of course, any delegation of these changes would also include a financial analysis and cost recovery to reimburse the costs incurred by the county. Along the same line, TRPA has indicated that as part of this process, they will also be taking a look at the number of memorandums of understanding, all different amongst the different jurisdictions. And emphasis on this would be to more appropriately place some of the delegation of the review and authority of the different project review. Some of the other areas for comment or that were identified for room for improvement within the existing TRPA code were things such as, it's commonly referred to as the two-step subdivision process. Essentially, in order to subdivide land within the Tahoe Basin, a project proponent must first come in with a multifamily project and then later on convert it into a subdivision project. The problem is it would be more appropriate to review what the ultimate project would be as opposed to creating a situation where we may miss some of the project review components such as frontage improvements or things that are typically associated with the subdivision. It would be more appropriate to make the developer aware of those issues right from the get-go. Another area that has commonly been identified is that TRPA doesn't have a variance process, similar to what the county would have for addressing the minor deficiencies in code or a particular project that just doesn't quite fit the criteria. In order to accomplish a change for one that doesn't meet the criteria, they must undertake a code amendment and update the, make an amendment to the code itself. So county staff is suggesting that incorporation of a variance component would enhance their existing code. Along the same lines, a resolution of conflicts. It's not uncommon for different codes to have contradictions that may not be contemplated on the early onset of the code amendment. County staff is suggesting that provision be built into the code to address those conflicts when they occur, understanding that this regional plan update is planned for the next 20 years. We've also received comments that provisions should be included into the code to encourage redevelopment. Redevelopment staff has identified that certain incentives should be included in the code such as density or height that could make some of these projects more economically viable. The remainder of the comments that were received are primarily technical in nature. They're a means to allow the document to be more understandable to the general public as well as more useful by the different staff that would be utilizing the code. So with all that, staff is asking that your board direct staff to submit the comments from the county based on the county's position on the proposed Phase Two of the reorganization and reforming of the TRPA Code of Ordinances. Staff is also seeking the board's direction to continue to work with the staff at TRPA to find solutions to some of these common issues related to the Code of Ordinances. I also wanted to quickly address Lauren's comments about the transect. We didn't have time with this staff report to include the shift from TRPA away from the transect zoning. Basically, county staff had a meeting recently with TRPA staff. Their staff's concern is that the number of parcels that would be affected by the proposed transect zoning and the rezoning of those parcels could impact and delay the regional plan update effort. And with the concerns with the deadlines imposed on the regional plan update, they've, their thought was that it would be more appropriate to allow the local jurisdictions to determine whether they want to undertake transect zoning or plan area statements as part of the community plan update effort after the regional plan. So with all that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Questions, comments? Jennifer?
Thank you, Steve. I do have a couple of questions of com, or questions and comments. The first is, you're asking us to do two things today. The first piece is direct staff to submit comments. When you say comments, are you talking about the redevelopment agency list in here, or are there additional comments?
For the most part, it would be the comments that are contained within the staff report before your board. The attachment is the comments that were received to CDR from the redevelopment agency. So those would probably be included as an attachment.
I'm frankly a little uncomfortable with saying, yeah, go ahead and submit the comments, because the language in the staff report says below are a few examples of some of the issues identified. And I'm not comfortable saying, yeah, go ahead and submit those until I've seen them all. So while I would be perfectly happy today to say, yes, continue working with TRPA staff, I would not be comfortable saying, yeah, go ahead and put those comments in, because I haven't seen them. So I would ask that this board, I hope, would agree with me that, you know, we're being asked to do something that we don't have in front of us. I'm personally not comfortable with that. And I would ask you to bring this back to us at a future board date and provide us with those comments in detail so we can see them. Is there any problem with that, counselor?
No.
Okay. I'll let my other board members make any comments or have any questions, but that's the direction that I'm hoping we go today.
Questions, comments?
No, I'll just throw my two cents in. You know, I personally, along with what Supervisor Montgomery said, I like to see everything that's going and it's going to be included in anything that we're going to send to another agency. So I think it's, I think that's not unreasonable.
I should also note that this item is scheduled before the governing board for this Wednesday with a joint TRPA and APC, or TRPA governing board and APC meeting. So if at all appropriate to bring forward the general comments that are identified in the staff report and then perhaps follow up with a more formal response. Certainly, it's the pleasure of your board.
Yeah, frankly, I'm just not comfortable doing that at this point. I mean, I'm sorry that the meeting is going to be this Wednesday, but we're submitting comments we haven't seen. I just have a very high level of discomfort with doing that.
This attachment one, those comments that are here as attachment one, is that not what we're being asked to submit?
That would be a portion of it. The attachment one, I believe, is the redevelopment agency reports. That would be included in the comments as well as the specific comments that are identified within the staff report before you.
Okay, and you mean the bulleted items on page two of your report?
That's right.
Okay. I guess I'm a little unclear as to where the uncertainty is. I'm seeing some pretty specific recommendations, certainly of the redevelopment agency, specific to chapter verse of what's being proposed. Those seem pretty clear. And then I didn't, I mean, I see that our staff's comments perhaps aren't chapter and verse specific, but I think are kind of looking for our board's direction more generally on some of these policy-related items. And I don't have a problem with what I'm seeing. I mean, I don't see anything in particular that jumps out at me and I say, no, we're off base, or it's going the wrong way. So I'm a little...
Mr. Chair, if I may, I can appreciate the comments that are being raised by the board. And based upon the wording in the staff report, where it does state below are a few examples, what I would recommend to your board is that staff come back to you with a draft letter showing the totality of what is being proposed to be submitted to TRPA, and then have that for your review at your November 8th agenda.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And one of the confusion was when the, was it Steve? Steve was up there and he was asked the question whether or not this was all of it. It wasn't a yes.
Make that very clear at the November 8th meeting.
Thank you.
But I think for our staff's benefit, I think this would be a good opportunity if on these, what do we have, eight or nine, eight bulleted items, seven bulleted items, as well as the comments redevelopment agency, if any of us have any thoughts or concerns about what is specifically identified here, it'd be helpful for our staff to hear that. And I saw nothing that caused me any concern with what was contained within the staff report. I mean, if the concern is what isn't in here that we might want to say, certainly that can be summed up neatly, I'm sure, by staff. But as far as what was contained in the staff report, I was fine with everything here.
To Mr. Euler's issue, if the board has any issues with the six to seven bulleted items, it would be my recommendation to your board that staff be able to provide some feedback to TRPA. And if there's any concern with the bulleted items, staff would like to hear those. Other than that, it would be my recommendation that staff at least address these bulleted issues so we can start the dialogue with the TRPA board.
And I'm happy to go over these bulleted pieces today with you now to give you specific detail on them. There are pieces that I don't think go far enough. There are other pieces that I feel that before I could say yes, move forward with that, I would need additional clarification. The first bullet, if you just want me to go through these, the two-step subdivision, I'm completely in agreement with those comments, and I'd be happy to send those forward to the TRPA. I'd like more clarity on the second bullet. Attention should be given to working toward clearly defined rules for the TRPA and local jurisdictions. I'd like a better understanding of what we believe those rules would be, should be. The third point about assigning responsibility and particularly as it relates to the TMDL, I think it's critically important in there that we let the TRPA know that the responsibility for BMPs should not devolve, this is my opinion, to the local jurisdiction, but should be a TRPA responsibility. It's their law. It's their code. They didn't implement it for 20-plus years. And I don't want it devolving to us where we don't have staff, we don't have money, we don't have, we don't have the resources to implement that. The variance, absolutely, fully in agreement with that. Again, these contradictions which might occur across chapters, I need more clarification on what that really means and what are those potential contradictions. Economically viable redevelopment projects, agree completely. Don't have an issue with that. The technical changes that are referred to in the final bullet point about eliminating confusion within the code, again, I need more clarity on that. I need to understand what we believe those points of confusion are and how we think they can be resolved. And then just generally, my concern with this is on the first page of the staff report, page 15 of our board packet, we indicated that input was provided from Public Works Planning, Engineering, and the Redevelopment Agency. And the only real backup detail I see on this is from the Redevelopment Agency. So I would like to see the specific comments from Public Works Planning and Engineering as it relates to this item. And then even within the Redevelopment Agency memorandum, there's some clarification that I would like, and perhaps that's me sitting down with Jim Laboue and working through that with him. But again, I'm, you know, frankly, I understand Supervisor Euler's desire to move forward with this, particularly given the time constraints with the TRPA meeting on Wednesday. I'm just not comfortable with what's in front of us.
Jim?
So you'd be comfortable with bullets one, four, and six to go, for the staff to go forward?
I would.
I'd like to give the staff something to go forward and meet with TRPA on, I see.
You know, and potentially let them know at that meeting on Wednesday that we're going to be coming forward with some additional comments on this process that are going to be more detailed and have more clarity.
We'll have that back at your November 8th meeting.
Meeting.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jack? Kirk?
I'm comfortable with the bulleted items as identified, but I look forward to the feedback.
So I would move that we direct staff to continue to work with the TRPA staff to address minor technical matters, but not that we direct staff to submit the comments in front of us today.
Other than items one, four, and six?
Yes, other than items one, four, and six.
Second?
Second.
Moved in second. As discussed, all does the favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks.
And our last item of the day, Bob Costa is Public Works Lake Tahoe Stormwater Permit. Consider comments of revised draft National Pluton Discharge Elimination System.
Thank you, Bob Costa, Public Works Department. The purpose of this session is to update your board on pending changes to the stormwater permitting within the Lake Tahoe Basin and to seek your input regarding comments to the Regional Water Quality Control Board on the proposed permit for Placer County. But before I begin, I'd like to introduce Harold Singer, Executive Officer of the La Haunted Regional Water Quality Control Board, and ask that he step forward and provide some brief comments regarding the TMDL. brief comments regarding the TMDL and how we got to this point.
Good afternoon. I'm Harold Singer, the Executive Officer for the La Haute Water Board. Chairman Wiegand, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to come and talk with you today. You started all this. I'd really like for this to be a dialogue, so please ask any questions you have. This is very important to both the La Haute Water Board and I'm sure to Placer County. So we really need to have a good dialogue about this as we move forward. What I'd like to do is, is really talk just a little bit about the Total Maximum Daily Load, or the TMDL. It's been about a year since I think I was before your board in Auburn to talk about that, and I know there's been at least one new member of the board, so I wanted to bring you up to speed a little bit on that. And then talk a little bit about the upcoming draft permit that may be in front of the board this year. So with that, do not have a PowerPoint, but I do have a handout, so. Use that as some talking points. So to start out with the, the Total Maximum Daily Load, or the TMDL, this is a federal Clean Water Act requirement that the state of California is required to implement. So it, it does stem from the, the Federal Clean Water Act. What it involves is that all states are required to identify impaired waters. And impaired waters, by definition, are those that are not meeting the standards that have been set for those water bodies. So part of the TMDL is a process whereby the initial step is we identify where the sources of the pollutants are. And if you just skip to the, to the pie chart, the first one, that talks about sources of fine sediment loads, I wanted to give you a sense of what the, the research that went into the TMDL determined. These are four of the six sources. There are two sources that I didn't put on here because the amount coming from those two sources is either zero or so negligible, you wouldn't be able to see it on this pie chart. And those two sources are shoreline erosion around the lake itself and groundwater inputs to the lake. So we did look at those two and, and basically for, at least for the fine sediment load, those two sources were negligible. But as you can see from here, we did identify four sources that did, that do contribute some significant loads to the lake. And this is by percentage, so just looking at this, you can get a feel for where the major source is. And it is the urban contribution. It is coming from the developed areas around the lake. And I know, you know, I've, I've given this discussion to a lot of people and the first thing they say is, but the forest makes up 75 or more percent of the basin, why is it the load from the forest so low? Frankly, the, the runoff from the forest is not that much above the, the natural sources from the forest. Yes, there are some disturbed areas that, that do need some, some work, but the overall load from the forest is not that big as it relates to fine sediment. It is mostly coming from the urban area. So it gives you an idea of the percentages. The urban, as you can see, is about 72%. The forest is about 9%. Atmospheric loads are about 16%. And then stream channel erosion, and again, that's the erosion just from the stream banks themselves, is about 4%. So those are the major loads that are coming into the, into the lake. The next thing that the TMDL looks at is, and I want to really emphasize this, is technically feasible pollutant reduction strategies. What can we legitimately do from a technical perspective? And, and that's really one of the basic things that went into the, the TMDL development is what do we think we can do to reduce those loads? And where do, which source areas should we focus on? So as part of this effort, we, we went back again in the second area there, second pie chart that I've given you, is again, where the load reductions we think are needed by percentage. So if you, you know, compare the first two charts, of that large urban load that's in the first one, the sources, we think that we can achieve about three-quarters of the load reductions that are needed from the urban sources. It's a very high contribution area. It's also an area where we have a lot of opportunities. The one thing that, that you might look at and say, well, the forest load reduction is pretty small. Yes, it is. Because a lot of that is just naturally occurring runoff. And, and we're not looking to go back and basically go back even beyond what nature is, is producing. And that's why that's pretty small. So it gives you an idea of where our emphasis is, and I think that's important when we, when we talk as we move forward, is we're putting a lot of effort into quantifying the urban load reduction efforts that are going on. We've done a lot of modeling in that area. And the reason is clear from looking at these two pie charts. That's where the load is coming from. That's where we see the opportunities for significant reduction. We could eliminate the entire loads from the other three sources, and we wouldn't make a big dent in improving lake clarity. So we really do need to tackle the, the large urban load in order to really make a dent in, in clarity in the lake. The other thing that the TMDL does is it, it requires us to establish a schedule. And that was part of the TMDL effort, was to say, we're looking to achieve lake clarity that was, that's existed as a standard in 65 years. We're not trying to tackle this in five years, 10 years, or 20 years. We know it's going to take a long time to get there. And that's, it's a long time in TMDL speak to put a 65-year schedule into a TMDL. We had a lot of people who said, that's way too long. And we said, no, that's appropriate. Given the problems we have, the amount of effort that's going to have to go into this, it's going to be a long time to get there. There's also some interim milestones, and we, we put five-year targets in here. So for an example, for the urban load, we're looking to achieve about a 10% reduction in the first five years of the implementation of the TMDL. That's part of the, the TMDL that was adopted. And as you can see, the approvals, it was approved by the La Haute Water Board late last year. It, it had to go through two other approvals at the state level, or one other approval at the state level, that's the State Water Resources Control Board. So that was approved in, in early 2000, 2011, excuse me. But this is also a by-state TMDL. The state of Nevada participated collaboratively in the development of this TMDL, and they adopted this TMDL in summer of 2011. And then both states' TMDLs were approved by US EPA, because it's a federal requirement, US EPA is to approve it. So the, the strategies, the schedules, all of that is embraced within the TMDL and has been adopted by these various agencies, which really does start to now limit our discretion as we move forward. And I'll talk to you a little bit more about that as we move into the permitting process. Well, the TMDL is not self-implementing. It must be implemented through permits or other activities. So what we're doing right now is we're putting together the NPDES permit, and the title should say National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit. So it's, it's a federal permit that the state of California has delegated authority for, as does the state of Nevada. These permits are five-year permits, and the county has been one of the three permotees on this permit for a number of permit cycles. I think this is now the third or fourth permit cycle for this. As you can see here, this permit did expire last year. It's basically continued in effect until we do renew it. So we're about a year behind renewing it, but it is something that's on our work schedule that, to get this done. We, we wanted to do this after the adoption of the TMDL so we can incorporate the TMDL requirements into the permit. So that was one of the major reasons for the one-year delay. So what we're doing right now is, is through the permit, the permit not only has to implement the TMDL, but it also has to implement certain minimum standards that exist at the federal and the state level. So we're trying to, to mesh those two things together right now. As you can see by the timing here, we have gone out with a draft permit that was in the summertime. We had a, at least a 30-day-plus review time. We got a number of comments. The, the county submitted a, a pretty detailed letter to us from, on your concerns, and I think that letter's in your agenda packet today. So right now, we're going through a process of trying to balance our response to these comments. Obviously, we've gotten comments that say, looks about right. We've gotten comments that say, boy, it's way too weak. We've gotten comments that say, boy, it's way too stringent. We're going to have to balance those things. And, and clearly, the two things that at least I'm looking at in balancing that is, what are our minimum legal requirements? And where do, where does the board have discretion? Where it has discretion, I'm trying to lean towards the, the request for the permotees mainly to, to provide that discretion, because I realize that times are tough, you've got a lot to do and not a lot of funds to do those things. So we're trying to use that discretion where we have it. Where things are legally mandated, we may not have the discretion to, to provide those things, and we'll have to look at other mechanisms to address those kind of issues. So that's really where we're headed at this point. We're in the process right now, as I said, of, of doing some revisions. We plan to put that back out on the street for at least a 30-day review. And at least as of right now, this is scheduled for our La Haute Water Board meeting in early December for their consideration. If we put it out on the street, that doesn't mean they have to say yes or no at their meeting in December. They could decide that they want to send it back to staff for further clarification, revision. But at least it gets, it gets it before them and allows them to have some direct input to where we are today. They did hold a, a public workshop or a public hearing on the initial draft, and I know Bob Costa did speak at that, along with some other people, so we're trying to bring all of that together. So what I want to do now is just briefly go back and, and just address some of the comments that we did receive from Placer County and, and looking both at the comment letter that we received and also at the staff report that Bob put together for you today. I've heard loud and clear, the biggest concern I think everybody has is funding. Where are we going to get the money to do this? I, I totally appreciate that. It's something that, that clearly everybody has to look at. You know, we're, we're basically looking at where we were in the past 20 years. We've, we've been lucky, I think, to have a lot of federal and state grant money to do a lot of these capital improvement projects. We have heard and we all know that that grant money is drying up quickly. We've been told by Senator Feinstein and others that, you know, the federal money is not likely to, we're not likely to see the same level of funding, if, if any funding at all, in the next few years. We obviously looked at the California Water Bill, and that's been put, put off for some time, or the water bond. That was going to provide some additional state funding. So we know those sources of funding are drying up, may not come to fruition in the future. So it's clearly that's something we have to look at. The main problem that, that I have with that aspect of it is that unfortunately, the schedules for the implementation, at least of the TMDL portion of this, are in adopted, adopted TMDL. And without changing that TMDL, the board really doesn't have discretion to provide another date or a, a different load reduction in the permit. There's other things we can try to address as we go through this, and, and I would be happy to talk with you about that. But at least right now, from the discretion perspective, the board does not have a lot of wiggle room in that area. The next aspect of this is, is monitoring. And again, all of these relate back to funding, but, but they are somewhat separate issues. We have tried to limit the monitoring to that minimal necessary to determine compliance with the permit. We think there's a lot more monitoring that could be done, but frankly, we understand everybody's perspective on this, and we've tried to minimize it. I also think we've tried to do some, require some monitoring that will also help your staff design better projects and design better operation and maintenance activities. So we think that the monitoring will help both of us do a better job in improving lake clarity. And, and I think we've tried to meld that pretty well. I've gotten some feedback from, from your county staff, from other permotees, that we're, we're pretty on target on that aspect of it. The other aspect that, that we've heard a lot about is consistency with other permotees, other entities in the basin about how this is going to come down and what kind of requirements are we're going to have. I can't speak directly to the Nevada side of the lake, which I know is one of the comments that was in the county letter. However, I, I can say to you that the adopted TMDL on the Nevada side of the lake looks at and requires the same kind of processes and procedures to account for load reductions. It requires the same level of load reduction within the same timeframes as the California entities. So from the perspective of what Nevada hopes that their entities will accomplish, it's exactly the same as what we hope you will accomplish. We're all on the same page on that. We're all going to be accounting the same way and looking at things the same way. I know there's technical meetings ongoing on a regular basis between California entity staff and Nevada entity staff, talking about these various things. So everybody's pretty much on the same page. The only difference is Nevada, at this point, has decided not to impose NPDS permits on the Nevada entities. I know there's a, a question about Nevada transportation, and I'm not sure if that's been dealt with totally yet. I don't think there's been a full decision on that, so there, there may be a permit on the Nevada Department of Transportation. From the Caltrans perspective, there is a permit on Caltrans in California. It is a statewide permit, and we anticipate that these TMDL requirements will be put into that Caltrans permit. The other big question is, what about the Forest Service? And again, I come back to the pie chart, the indication of, of where the load is coming from. There is a permit being considered right now by the State Water Board for the US Forest Service on a statewide basis. And if that comes to fruition, we will see that these TMDL requirements are implemented through that statewide permit. So it's not something that's off of our radar screen. Right now, it's on a statewide radar screen, and we are tracking that and following it very closely. And we know that, again, if that permit does come to fruition, these TMDL requirements will be in there. The other thing that came out of this again was the, the question about, we all know we have limited funds, let's focus them on, on the actual actions and not on monitoring or other things. And there was a comment in the staff report that I just wanted to repeat and sort of, and reflect on is, the TMD actions may not produce the desired water clarity because it's a theoretical model. We acknowledge that the, the modeling behind the TMDL is not perfect. But frankly, it is one of the better TMDLs in the nation. It includes most, probably the most, one of the more rigorous science that ever went into a TMDL. So we do have a lot of faith in it. But as part of our TMDL, we also have a very active adaptive management program. And, and I think, I would hope you would agree with me that we shouldn't stop doing good science. We should do the actions that we think that we, that science tells us right now will accomplish our goals, but we should also monitor those activities to make sure that we really are on the correct path and that we can't do some adjustments to be on even a better path. So I think we need to balance monitoring with actions and not just say, well, we've done good science, let's just go blindly ahead and implement things and look back 20 years from now and see if we're on the right track. I don't think we should go down that path. So we've tried to put in some level of monitoring that will tell us and try to correlate with what we're doing with what we're seeing in, at the landscape level and also in the lake level. So we can do legitimate, science-based adaptive management. The other thing I really want to do is I want to recognize the county's efforts. I think I've seen the strategic plan that you've come up with as, at least in a conceptual idea of how you're going to go about implementing the TMDL. I think some of the, the points in there are very well put together. Obviously, you're going to look at continuing some of your capital improvement projects. And I noticed you used the word cost-effective. And I want to point out to, to all of you that the TMDL provided the science that now lets you do a cost-effective analysis. It tell, it can tell you whether this project will give you more load reduction than that project for similar cost. It was the TMDL effort that gave us those tools. The second point, talked about O and M as being another pretty good component. And again, it goes back to the TMDL. We learned a lot through the TMDL process of where the pollutants are coming from. We would still be looking at, at, looking at nutrients as being the source of the loss of clarity if we hadn't done the TMDL. It was the TMDL that told us it's fine sediment. So what have we done with that? A lot of good science has gone into that, and we're now looking at much more advanced sweepers, which we, which we think are a very cost-effective way of picking up fine sediment before it gets washed into the lake. So there again, I think these two things are meshing together very well where we can say, the science is telling us where to focus our limited dollars to get the best bang for the buck. The last thing is the private property BMPs. Supervisor Montgomery just spoke to that earlier on one of the prior agenda items. We, we're glad you acknowledged that that's an area that the county can see benefits because those private property BMPs will help you achieve compliance with your permit requirements. Those count towards your permit compliance efforts, whether they're private property or public right-of-way streets. They all count. And some of the, the benefits of private property BMPs is, number one, it reduces the amount of water that your systems have to handle and reduces the amount of pollutants that your system have to, has to handle. And I think we've all looked at this on, on a long-term basis and said, private property BMPs, again, are a very cost-effective way of meeting our load reduction requirements that we have to have in the basin. So we hope you would encourage those to happen, and obviously, our TMDL gives you the opportunity to take credit for those things that occur within the watershed. The last thing that I wanted to cover is the request in the letter to us for a delay in adopting the NPDS permit or considering it to early to us for a delay in adopting the NPDS permit or considering it to early 2012. As I said earlier, you know, a lot of the things that we're doing are mandated by the federal law or mandated by the adopted TMDL. We also understand that you have a, what's called a Phase Two Stormwater Permit on the west side of Placer County. And we understand that the State Water Board is, is considering a revision to that permit that was originally scheduled for January of 2012. We've just learned that that is going to be delayed by a few months, at least, because of the comments they've received. It's a statewide permit that covers all small municipalities. We think that that may be more in the March and April timeframe, to see how those two things mesh together. But in terms of your request for a continuance, I'm amenable to that, but I'd really like to know what real issues we think we have the opportunity to try to solve in, by a delay. There are some things that I mentioned that the board doesn't have discretion on. If it's a delay to talk about those things, there really isn't a lot to talk about in that area. I don't have discretion to recommend to the board that they do something different. If there's areas where we have some discretion, I think some dialogue may be very useful. So I'm still wide open on that. I guess I'd like to have a better understanding from, from all of you, from your staff, as to what issues we think we can make some progress on. Because clearly, we want to roll up our sleeves. We want to make some progress on issues that we, we have some room to work with. And I'm willing to consider that, but I, I'd like some feedback on what those issues might be. So that's all I've got to say. I'm here to answer questions. You may want Mr. Costa to give his presentation, and then we can both answer questions, whatever. Your pleasure.
Bob, what was your plan? Were you going to finish up with the rest of your presentation, then open it up, or?
Yes, I, I prefer we do that. If, if it's okay with Mr. Singer, he's going to stick around.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I was able to cross off a, a number of points in my presentation as, as Mr. Harold Singer was speaking, because we didn't have a chance to really coordinate our presentations, but he was saying a lot of things that I, I was hoping to, to tell you about as well. So, but I want to step back a little bit and say that historically, our compliance with the NPDS permit in the Tahoe area has been focused on construction of capital improvement projects. And that includes such things as road shoulder and slope stabilizations, drainage control, drainage control structures, and sediment trapping devices, mostly designed to treat runoff from the public roads, not from private properties. Most of the cost for planning, design, and construction of those projects was funded, as you've heard, through state and federal grant sources. And since the early 1980s, Placer County has built more than 50 of those projects at a cost exceeding $40 million. This was all prior to the TMDL development and adoption. TMDL development and adoption has refocused the issue on fine sediment, phosphorus, and nitrogen. The projects that were designed and built previously were focused on sediment capture, but they were really more effective for coarse sediment, not the fine sediment that's now the targeted pollutant. As Mr. Singer said, the NPDS permits have a five-year term. And at each of the renewal periods, there are typically new requirements added. For instance, in the 2005 permit renewal, we, we were faced with new requirements for the development and implementation of a stormwater management plan, which also included elements such as public education and outreach, construction site controls, municipal operations and facilities, new development pollution controls, fiscal analysis element, an illicit discharge detection and elimination program. All of those elements, most of those elements come directly from Federal Clean Water Act requirements for NPDS programs. The TMDL that's being proposed and its implementation are, in addition to those elements, and I think that's, that's important for you to understand, we will have to continue implementing all of those Federal Clean Water Act requirements as, as an NPDS permatee. So the TMDL implementation requirements are additional for this next permit term. We, we have prepared comments. They are in your staff report. They are in a, an attachment to your staff report. I believe they start on page 27. Yeah, and we'll talk about that in a moment. The TMDL sets limits of, or a fine sediment reduction, discharge reduction of 10% within the first five years, total phosphorus reduction by 7% in the first five years, and total nitrogen 8% within that timeframe. Page 24 of your staff report shows a table which attempts to compare the annualized implementation costs for the existing permit and the proposed permit, as we currently understand it. It reflects about a $1.6 million annual increase in program implementation costs. Achieving these TMDL milestones is, is going to be very challenging and costly, and we're going to have to implement a variety of new and expanded strategies. The strategies will include continuing the capital improvement projects, but as I indicated, with greater emphasis on fine sediment removal and prioritization based on cost-benefit ratios. Another enhanced strategy will include implementing changes to road and drainage systems, maintenance, and operations, such as frequent use of high-efficiency sweepers, reduced volume of roadway traction sand use, and the use of cleaner sand materials. It will also require more frequent inspection and maintenance of our drainage systems. And still, another strategy involves those actions needed to capture and treat runoff from private properties, whether that's accomplished by our expanding the capacity of our capital improvement projects to now treat runoff from those areas, or by facilitating the installation of the private property BMPs, as, as Mr. Singer had discussed. Because ultimately, the permit makes the county, as a permatee, responsible for all stormwater discharges in our jurisdiction. We, we have identified a number of key issues. They're spelled out in both the comment letter to the La Houghton Regional Board that's attached to your staff report, as well as summarized in, in your staff report. Of course, the issue of cost and funding is always the first one mentioned. We estimate the cost for the first 15 years of implementing the TMDL to be $130 million for Placer County. For the first five years, that estimate is $38 million, with another $800,000 for those other mandated Federal Clean Water Act requirements in the stormwater permit. And those include such things as monitoring, inspections, reporting. And it was mentioned that a good portion of the capital cost, approximately $35 million of that $38 million, may be available through federal and state grant sources. But that's not assured. And, and I think that Mr. Singer discussed that in his presentation as well, that those sources cannot be assured. The current sources are drying up. The expectation is that the locals and will, will step up and find ways to fill the gap, that we can no longer rely on those federal and state grant sources. A good portion of the NPDS permit implementation, other than the capital projects, has traditionally come from road fund and general fund sources, though we do receive some small amounts of outside funding for limited monitoring, some maintenance, and occasional equipment purchases. County Road Fund has funded the ongoing operations and maintenance of, of the capital water quality projects, as well as roadway and storm drainage infrastructure. As new projects are constructed and the more technologically advanced treatment practices are employed, the maintenance and operational costs are going to continue to increase. And this is going to place an ever-increasing demand on, on the limited road funds. With regard to the schedule, it was mentioned that the TMDL has a 65-year schedule with incremental five-year milestones. Because this is a five-year permit, we are expected to reach that first five-year milestone. However, it, it should be noted that the load reduction requirements are the greatest in the earlier years. It's not a linear schedule. Approximately half of the total load reduction is required in the first 15 years. And based on the load reduction estimates and strategies that county has identified through its TMDL strategy report, we're going to have to, to construct many new capital projects. We're going to have to implement extensive changes to our roadway sanding, de-icing, and sweeping practices. We're going to have to implement some form of private property best management practices, and implement extensive changes with focus on maintenance efforts. Mr. Singer mentioned another one of the considerations, and that is the, the inconsistent implementation of the TMDL throughout the basin. It's true that the TMDL is a basin-wide TMDL. But again, I'd, I'd point out that as an NPDS permatee, which affects the three California jurisdictions, Placer County, El Dorado County, and the city of South Lake Tahoe, we not only have the TMDL implementation, we have those additional Federal Clean Water Act requirements, and we have the, the burden of potential federal and state enforcement actions for implementation of the permit. Mr. Singer mentioned the, the concern about the inefficient use of resources and wanting to focus on those actions which have direct measurable water quality benefits. Many of the actions that are required in the draft permit will require development of plans, reporting, monitoring, database management and development, all of which have no direct beneficial impact on improving water quality. They may be necessary to help demonstrate progress on the TMDL, but again, they don't have any direct and obvious measurable benefit to water quality. There may potentially be impacts in the private sector, and we talked about this, in the context of private property BMPs. One of the requirements of the permit is that the county develop and implement ordinances and enforcement strategies that will ensure our ability to implement all the necessary TMDL actions and permit requirements. If we are not able, through our capital program, to fund capital projects that will treat runoff from private property, it may be necessary to, to enter the realm of somehow encouraging or enforcing private property BMPs. Mr. Singer also mentioned the theoretical benefit question about whether or not, because the TMDL was developed based on theoretical models, and that our tracking of progress is based on theoretical modeling, we are attempting to compare those theoretical results with actual field-measured conditions. And in the end, we may find that the models have not correctly predicted the benefits or have not correctly tracked the benefits. And ultimately, it may not work. Staff attended a regional board hearing on September 14th and the following day submitted the comments that you see on page 27 of your staff report. While our comments generally reflect those of our NPDS co-permatees, other commentators have suggested that the draft permit monitoring requirements are inadequate, that the draft permit requirements lack specificity, and that the current NPDS permit requirements had not been completely incorporated into the new draft. So today, we're requesting that your board consider the comments that we have provided in our letter to the regional board, and the key issues that we've described today, and provide us with any direction that you may have regarding future comments as the NPDS new permit process continues. You've heard that there's another draft due out. There will be another 30-day comment period. We have already seen a preview of some of the modifications that are proposed, but not the official version, which we suspect we'll see next, next week, perhaps, or shortly thereafter. So with that, I'd, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and I'm sure Mr. Singer is willing to do so as well.
Thanks, Bob. Question's kind of Kirk.
On the pie charts, you identify the various fine sediment loads. One of them is atmospheric. Can you give me an example of what some of those atmospheric sediments are? And you also identified them as one of the substantial load reduction measures. So how do we go about capturing the atmospheric sediment?
Thank you, yes. Much of the atmospheric deposition comes from in-basin sources, such as road sanding. We all know that when the roads are dry and there's, you know, dust on the roads and people drive over them, we see those dust clouds. Actually, capturing some of that sediment through these advanced sweepers will solve both the runoff problem and the air deposition problem. Same thing with construction projects. If we can keep construction projects slightly damp, keep the dust down, that will eliminate some of the dust that's getting to the lake. So there's, there's some best management practices that can be done on the urban landscape that can significantly reduce those things. And those things are what's built into the TMDL strategies, mainly, again, the capturing of those sediments on roadways, and some of the best management practices that we all, I think, incorporate into our construction projects. Sometimes, they're not implemented as well as we would like.
Sure. So both those examples are things that, for whatever reason, I just presumed would have been urban as opposed to atmospheric, the road sanding as well as the construction-related activities. So then what are some examples of some of the urban fine sediment loads?
Again, some of the same things. And let me clarify. When we talk about atmospheric, we're talking about sediment that falls directly on the lake from the air. When we're talking about the urban load, we're talking about that runs off the urban area with stormwater. So they both may originate, the particle itself may originate in the urban landscape. How it gets to the lake is, is two different ways, and that's why we identified them differently. So the same, some of the same examples are true here. Construction projects that aren't well managed, don't have appropriate BMPs. We get, we get, you know, spring, fall thunder showers. A lot of that can wash off into the creeks, get into the lake. Same thing with road runoff. If it, if we don't pick up those fine sediment particles or capture them in some kind of treatment device, they will eventually get to the lake. So those are, again, two sources of, of fine sediment that could get to the lake from the urban area.
So when you're, pardon me, when you're doing that analysis, and you're, you're attributing two different types of sediment deposits into the lake by virtue of two different means of transportation, one would be the runoff of that road sanding versus the, it getting into the air and then settling back on there. When you start talking about the load reductions, I'm assuming that one measure can take, can impact both of the sources then, right? One measure to capture sand, for instance, reduces, has a, has a result in reducing two different sources. And so that is credited both areas? We get credited in both categories for those reductions?
You're, the only requirements that the county have, has is the urban runoff, so the urban load. So the county would not get credit for their NPDS permit for particulate matter that they might remove that would eventually have gotten through the air deposition into the lake. But you are getting credit for that, that which would have gone on the urban runoff side of things. So it's sort of a collateral benefit to the lake. You're doing the same practice. You're probably not doing it any differently, any more frequent than what you would do it, what, how you would do it to collect that which would run off. But the answer to your question on credits is, no, you're not getting credit for the urban load, or for the, the load that would come in through the atmospheric urban load, or for the load that would come in through the atmospheric deposition.
Okay. And then what about, can you give me some examples of some of the forest fine sediments?
Sure. Number of different things. One is existing roads that cross creeks. We all know there's a lot of roads in the forest that cross creeks for transportation purposes, for forest management activities, for recreation. Some of those roads aren't very well best, don't have good best management practices, and the runoff from those roadways goes directly into a water body. That could be one source. There could be some situations where, through certain types of forest management practices, they could produce some additional loads. We're looking at those new practices to at least minimize that effect. We do realize that a lot of fuel reduction activities have to take place in this basin. We need to do those things. But at least we need to minimize the water quality effects of those activities.
Okay. And so, again, trying to, approaching this from the standpoint of how do we maximize the benefits of the county for actions that we're currently taking, whether they be directly related to this particular item, or other things that we're doing, for instance, pursuing a biomass project, which obviously has air quality benefits, and I would think fine particulate matter impact by reducing burning within the basin, you're reducing some of that atmospheric particulate matter that would otherwise be settling in the lake. Though it's not an urban reduction, certainly the county, I would think, should get some kind of credit for that kind of, is that kind of stuff quantifiable when we start talking about where the county is taking steps in other areas, where we might want to be able to say, hey, I put a little credit for this?
As of right now, at least, the TMDL doesn't look at that as being a credit because it's coming from a different source. I hear what you're saying, and I'm gonna maybe ask, we've got Doug Smith from our office here with me. And before I step into a scientific area that I'm not that familiar with, you know, the burning of some of the material in the forest probably does produce the ash that you're talking about. I'm not sure if that is a fine sediment material that is contributing to lake clarity, or if it may have some nutrients in it. I don't really want to go down that path because I'm not the expert. I don't know, Doug, if you can answer that? I'll put you on the spot.
I'll try to answer this. Doug Smith, senior supervising geologist at the Water Board. The smoke, organic matter, produces fine particulates, but the lake reacts much differently to the organic fine particulates than it does the inorganic fine particulates that come from soil. So, yes, they are a concern, but a very, very small concern, as compared to the inorganic particulates from the soils and the roads.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to start by thanking you, Harold, for convening a meeting of the various jurisdictions, electeds, and staff from our various departments of public works about a month ago, I think it was. Might even be longer, time flies when you're having fun. And one of the things that came up at that meeting that I think really sort of creates a situation where our request for a delay in adoption of the NPDS permit was, the issue was raised that the EPA had some real concerns about, I believe, both the TMDL and the NPDS permit. But those concerns were not very well articulated, and we don't understand them. And I don't think it makes sense for us to move forward with adoption on this permit until we really understand what the EPA's issues are, and we figure out ways that we can or cannot deal with them. You also mentioned that, you know, there was some timelines that needed to be followed, and that there were some discretionary actions that your board could take, and other actions that they just did not have the discretion to take. I think it would be very important for us to understand, what are those discretionary actions? What are the non-discretionary areas, so that we don't waste our time and your time going down those rabbit holes that don't have resolutions? Makes metaphor, but you know what I mean. The concern about the fact that there's no NPDS permit for Nevada, it really does matter. And I really think that we do need to come to some sort of better agreement on that, also with the U.S. Forest Service. While the forest does not contribute a lot to the fine sediment loads, and let me just also state that I think your science is good. I don't disagree with the science, I don't disagree with the goal. I think there are just some unresolved issues that before your board moves forward with adoption on the permit, we need to see if we can resolve. And I don't think we've really had that opportunity. I'm currently trying to set up a meeting with Jared Blumenfeld from the EPA, go down there with folks from Placer County, South Lake Tahoe, and El Dorado County, to see if we can identify what these specific EPA concerns are. But believe me, I'm going to raise the Forest Service issue, and I'm going to raise the State of Nevada issue, because EPA is a federal agency. I believe that your board does have the discretion to delay adoption of the permit beyond the December 6th or 7th date. And I would request that you actually make that request to the board, that they delay it until sometime after January, so that we can have the time to really sit down, identify the issues that can be discussed and followed up upon, see if there are resolutions to them, and bring something to your board that's really a more comprehensible and understandable package that we all at least have a shared vision on. Right now, I think we are all operating from such different viewpoints on this, that this is just going to continue to be a very contentious issue. And one of the things in our Placer County comment letter of the September 15th that went to Robert Larson, is, you know, this issue of an unfunded mandate. You know, while I think it's very nice that the draft permit findings said that it was not an unfunded mandate, I think you would find that we probably don't agree with that. And I think there's some follow-up that needs to occur in terms of that discussion. And again, the Environmental Protection Agency concerns, we don't even know what they are, and they aren't here today to say, these are our issues. In conversations I've had with Jared, I'm not sure he recognizes what they are, because it's the staff level versus the administrative level, and that conversation needs to happen. And I don't think that conversation has happened yet, much less our conversation with them, and then our follow-up conversation with you. I do have a couple of emails here from Claire Fortier from South Lake Tahoe, and from Norma Santiago from El Dorado County, asking that you ask your board to delay hearing this until after January of 2012. We will be following up, we as a county, with a letter with the same request, and some additional detail. I have for you as well, I'm sure you've seen it all, I killed a tree here, the backup documentation from El Dorado County and Placer County as to our concerns, some of which were addressed today, but many of which are outstanding. So I would just ask that we delay the La Hanten Board hearing this permit and likely adopting it until after January of 2012.
If I might, Supervisor Montgomery, we did have the collective meeting, you were present at that this last week with those aforementioned entities, and they are going to be going to their full councils and boards to ask for a similar request. I think also it was voice there, is a concern not issuing, making sure a draft permit was not issued as well, that there's some issues that need to be identified and worked through as issues, not as draft permit conditions. So the collective thought of the group there was not to have a draft permit issued and then argue the conditions of the draft permit. But look at these issues that Mr. Costa and others raised as issues, have all of our jurisdictions make sure we're working in unison, because we thought there is also helpful to everybody to have a common permit position about how we would implement certain things, working with the resource conservation districts and others to maybe address your requirements for education and those type of things, and training, so that we would have the benefit of that collective action. So part of it is to make sure that the issues that we see in common are in common, and that we can resolve those, and hopefully make your work in responding back to individual jurisdictions, that at least we have common positions that we can reflect and then can be dealt with from that way. But there was a lot of discussion about not having any permit issued, and then having to fight the conditions of the permit, but to really work on the issues and then have that lead to a permit.
Right, exactly. And just to follow up on that, what we don't want to find ourselves in is the position of fighting a rear-guard action because the permit has been issued. We want to try to resolve as many of these issues before the permit is approved.
Or drafted and released as well.
Okay. Well, let me start. I think all of your suggestions are very valid. You know, definitely these things we want to get clarity on, so we're all looking at something and understanding what it means, because I think that's the key. I'd be happy to help you set up that meeting with U.S. EPA, and if I can offer, I think it would be beneficial if we were there also. Because then we can have a collective discussion, rather than you talking to EPA, us talking to EPA, maybe getting slightly different stories, and then trying to reconcile it talking to you. So it seems to me we could facilitate this discussion by having a three-way meeting, and I'd be happy to even ask them to come up here. So we can try that and save your effort to go down to San Francisco to do that, but if we have to go to San Francisco, I'll go also. The other question, I guess, and let me put it forward, and this is not locked in by any means, but you mentioned that you don't know what EPA really wants to require in the permit, or wants us to require in the permit. Wouldn't it be useful to have that language in front of all of us, so we could both look at it and say, oh, now I see what they want, let's talk about it? As opposed to talking about something that we don't have written down, and that we may be looking at differently? And I just put that forward, how we do that, you know, it could be done with a public draft permit, it could be done with some other mechanism. But I've always found if you have something in writing that everybody can focus on and read the words on the paper, and then we can argue what the words mean, as opposed to concepts that come out of people's mouths. So I would suggest that we try to get something that we can all look at and get a sense of, that you can give to Mr. Costa, he can look at it, talk with the other staff from the other agencies, and then have a real robust dialogue about the implications of those requirements. And I think we're in a position of putting something forward. How we do it, I'm open to suggestions, but I really do think something in writing would facilitate that discussion. And Mr. Blumenthal can see what it is EPA is asking us to put in the permit. So I think that would be helpful for all participants in a meeting. I will bring this back to the chair of the board, and we'll see where we go with this. I know our timing, we're working pretty diligently right now to try to put together the next draft of the permit. And I guess I would say, even if it went out on the street, there's nothing that says it has to be on the December agenda. So if the December agenda doesn't get put together till mid-November, and we have a lot of time to talk between now and then, see where we are, and if we're making good progress in having this dialogue, I think the board would be very amenable, frankly, to letting that dialogue continue. Because I think they'd rather have that dialogue at this level than for them to be asked, you know, without a lot of preparation to consider a lot of these items before them. So I don't think they're driving this, per se. Clearly, there's no mandate that the board consider it in December, so it is a discretionary matter, as you said. Obviously, we don't want it to delay too much, but delay for the purposes of resolving some of these issues, or at least reaching a consensus about what this means, we may disagree about the need to impose it in a permit, but at least we can reach consensus about what the implications are.
Thank you. And I don't disagree with you that having something in writing is a good start. What I don't want to see is something that's an administrative draft or some sort of official document. What I'd like to do is have that discussion over some sort of working notes, or some kind of ad hoc process. The problem is, you well know, because you've been in this business a while, is once you put something in an official form, people go, well, hey, I saw that before and it changed. Well, you know, it's easier if we can avoid that by having the discussions before it becomes that official format.
Yes. I appreciate what you just said, I've been through it many times.
I'm sure you have.
And I do believe, and I may have gotten it wrong in the meeting, that there had been a request for the EPA comment letter that was going to help guide the permit, and or notes from EPA or something like that. So I think if there's a document that reflects EPA's thoughts on what should go into the permit, that would be good for the local agencies to receive. I think the concern is, whatever the mechanism by EPA's comments, and you interpret those and put them in a permit, I think folks, especially since there may be a disconnect between administrator of EPA and the staff, would like to see what EPA's comments are, not your thoughts on what their comments are. It would help in the dialogue.
We'd be happy to share that. It's a public record, and you've just asked for it, so you've got it. We'll get it to you. And I think we received EPA's comments in two forms. One was a formal letter, and then I believe we got a strikeout, underlined version of our permit with their suggested changes. And my recollection in looking at their U.S. EPA comment letter and the draft that's being worked on, is a lot of that has just been incorporated verbatim, we haven't interpreted. But we'd be happy to share it.
Thank you. Really appreciate your willingness to have this discussion.
With, in terms of trying to facilitate this meeting with EPA?
Well, I've been actually in communication with Jared directly.
Okay.
I'm now trying to work with his scheduler, because Jared is one of those very busy people who doesn't know his own schedule. So what I'll do is, there'd be actually five participants, the EPA, La Hanten Water Board, County of Placer, County of El Dorado, and South Lake Tahoe. So what I'll do is probably put together some sort of doodlebug scheduling program, and that way we can just figure, settle on a date that will work for all of us.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll email that out to everyone.
Okay. Are there any comments from anyone else from the public? Just to cover that. Thanks. So it sounds to me like we've gotten to where we wanted to be as per the agenda, unless you want to make a formal motion, or Bob, do you have any of the comments, or?
No, I don't have anything additional to add.
Jennifer, you're good?
Yeah, I don't think we need a formal motion for this.
Okay. Well, appreciate your willingness to come here and chat with us, and hear our concerns, and good conversation. Thanks. So with that, we are finished for the day, except for, we are journeying to a reception hosted by the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association at Jake's. That starts at 5:30, and then we will reconvene tomorrow morning here at 9 o'clock.